Good afternoon. It's four o'clock on October 18, 2022. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' meeting. Could you please take the roll?
Fox?
Here.
Krieger?
Yes.
Begic?
Here.
Coonan?
Here.
Bradkey?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Harret?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation. All my pleasure, please.
Lord, we come before you this afternoon asking once again that you bless this session of the County Commission, be with this board this day, guide them so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the good God of our citizens, one nation under God, in whose law we shall live.
Thank you. First on the agenda would be the minutes of 9:20, 22.
So move.
Support?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, citizen input. Does anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the board and all the citizens of Bay County, please do so now? Okay. Seeing no one, we will move on to petitions and communications.
I'd like to make a motion if we could to go out of regular order and put forward resolution number 2022-227.
228.
Sorry, 220. Is it 220? I think it's 227.
No. We're just moving to go to the county executive's announcements first.
Yep.
It's not on resolution.
Okay. So what do you say? So tell me what we want to do.
There's a proclamation for our local chambers of commerce. Yeah, Marlena and Megan are...
Yes. Originally, originally here with this is 2022-227.
Yes, and...
There you go.
There is none. Nope. There is none. Nope.
Yeah, perhaps Katie would want to read it into the record?
Yeah.
And then I'd like to present it to our two outstanding representatives, CEO and staff from the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce.
Absolutely. A proclamation from the Bay County Executive, whereas chambers of commerce strive to address the community's top challenges and greatest opportunities through bold leadership and innovative problem solving, and whereas chambers of commerce foster stronger, more vibrant communities by advocating for priorities to promote economic prosperity, boost quality of life, and create access to meaningful employment and opportunities for all residents, and whereas chambers of commerce are champions for communities, serving as a trusted resource for businesses, residents, and other stakeholders, and whereas chambers of commerce create catalytic community partnerships to build resilient economies and promote community-wide prosperity, and whereas our very own Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, which was founded in 1882 and is currently 741 members strong, has worked continuously and diligently to ensure that our local economy prospers by hosting over 40 annual events in our community and instituting various community programs such as a talent and attraction initiative, minority business partnerships, Leadership Bay County, Youth Leadership Bay County, and the Energize Bay Area Youth Professionals Network, to name but a few. And whereas our Bay Area Chamber of Commerce has been recognized statewide for its various achievements, including the 2019 Michigan Outstanding Chamber Award from the Michigan Association of Chamber Professionals, and has proven time and again to be integral in supporting our community, therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Executive, Jim Barsha, and the Bay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 19, 2022, as Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day, and encourage all residents to learn more about the Bay Area Chamber, its impact in support of local businesses, and to become actively involved in its mission to improve Bay County.
Thank you. I would like to thank all of you who have been here. Except this from my office, also in the majority of these people who are here for the outstanding services provided to the region, and especially those of Bay County and those who are in business in Bay County. So thank you for your dedication and your leadership, and we're very proud to be able to present this to you, and really have only the Bay Area Chamber of all the chambers in Bay County to declare the Chamber of Commerce Day tomorrow, October 19.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Would you be a copy?
Yeah. The President, we want to say we have to all of our staff and our directors and our members, thank you so much for this wonderful proclamation, and thank you even more so for your longstanding support of the Bay Area Chamber. I see many of you at events long before I started working there, and I've always appreciated your support and what we have been able to so far accomplish with our bid dollars that you've funded. This is absolutely amazing. You're looking at one, a dynamic individual who helped to feed our talent and passion every mention. We're here about to have on the November 15th meeting, and we're really excited this year. So this is, thank you for your support. It allows us to really reach our businesses on a regular basis, and we could not do it without you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your support. Without all of you moving this initiative forward, we couldn't do any of the things that we're doing in the chamber without you. We are so grateful. You will see in here some of the different things that we're doing in the area to move our community forward and make it even stronger than what it is. Again, we thank you all.
Alrighty. Moving on to petitions and communications. First up is Corporate Compliance and Ethics Resolution for the Bay County Medical Care Facility and motion to receive.
So move.
Support. Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
So it comes to Ms. Amber. I mean, we really have nothing to do with this.
No.
I'm assuming you probably reviewed it though, correct?
What? I have read through it briefly, but quite frankly, our job is just to receive it. We don't have any input in the operation of that facility. It's completely unautonomously ruled by different boards.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons why I'm bringing it up, so that individuals understand that they're a standalone.
Yes.
So when things happen and all these calls go to our county exec asking what he's going to do about it, Jim doesn't have anything to do with it. It needs to be directed to the facility.
You are absolutely 100% correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Begic.
I would point out though that we have a, we still have a bond out with them with the Bay Medical Care. Is there a bond that we're still carrying or are we...
I don't think that there's...
Any financial litigation at the time?
I don't think that there's a bond at this point in time. The bond was paid off, but there are two separate millages that our voter approved. Well, yeah, there are two separate millages that are voter-approved millages.
So do we have any fiduciary responsibility, say if those don't pass or if the millage doesn't pass or...
The Bay Medical Care Facility is part of our common bank, so if in fact they have liabilities that they incur, for instance, for staffing costs, things of that nature, then that money would be covered by the county as part of our common bank.
Yeah. One other point that there was a lower investigation back a while ago, so that's probably why they did this compliance thing, because there were some things that their employees didn't do, like reporting missing narcotics and stuff like that. So hopefully that will not happen again, because then they can get their Medicare and Medicaid payments pulled, which is not a good thing for a nursing facility. So hopefully it'll be good in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Krieger?
Thank you. And just to add to what Vaughn just said, those issues have been resolved. They've put things in the works to make sure that it doesn't reoccur, and all their, they're in compliance with everything.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And I understand there'll be a change in the director out there by the end of the year. So we'll have a new person go interact with. In the past, it's been difficult to get any information from the facility.
I think we're getting ready to make an appointment there. That'll be the third new person on the board from last year. So it'll be a complete turnover of that as well.
Okay, we have motion, we have the motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're the October appointments of Glenn Rowley for the Bay County Land Bank Authority and Brian Benchley to the Department of Health and Human Services Board. We received both of those.
I'll move with support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we need to make the appointments.
I'll move with support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll go to resolutions, reports and resolutions of committees. The Ways and Means Committee. Commissioner Fox.
Resolution number 2022-209, the road patrol contracts for 2023. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-210, the 2022 drainage assessments. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Begic.
I just had a point. I missed the last meeting when we had the drain commissioner here talking about that one place out in my area, actually, on a nine mile, it was a...
Culver.
Culver that had been put into a drain that they were, you know, trying to get to work in, was blocking some of the flow. So I did go out and take a look at it, and I think the landowner got some bad advice from a previous landowner about what he could do out there, and I assume it's been removed by now. I'm not sure. I haven't heard back from anybody on it, but it was obstructing the flow of the creek. So tend to that.
He didn't mention anything about it today, I can tell you that.
Yeah. I made a field trip.
Oh, yeah. Any more discussion? Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-211, the fiscal year 2023 federal visitation and access grant for Bay County front of the port. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-212, request for qualifications for the medical examiner. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-213, the 2023-24 aerial application contract extension with Al's aerial spraying. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-214, the MD Eagle grant application for scrap tire cleanup for fiscal year 2023. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-215, amendment to the DNR Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, numbers, do I really have to say those? 26000561 and 2600163. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-216, the general fund cables. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And resolution number 2022-21A, generator replacement. I move this resolution.
You missed seven.
Mm-hmm.
Nine.
Two on seven.
My bad.
Let me backtrack.
Okay.
Resolution number 2022-217, the services of Robert Redmond to review the 2023 budget. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, resolution number 2022-218, the generator replacement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Fox.
You're welcome.
Next, for personnel and human services. Commissioner Johnson.
All right. So we'll start off with resolution number 2022-219, 2022 apportionment.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
You move.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ready? Resolution number 2022-220, Williams Township, Calcalon Township, and Hampton Township side agreements. I move this resolution.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-221, purchase of service agreement with Region 7 AAA Department on Aging. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-222, memorandum of understanding with Saginaw County Community Mental Health Agency for regional perinatal quality improvement activities in Bay County. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-223, authorization to enter into provider agreements with prospective health insurance and health maintenance organizations. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-224, yearly lease agreement for golf cart use by the Bay City Department of Public Safety for fireworks festival. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then finally, resolution number 2022-225, vacancies at 911 Central Dispatch and Department on Aging. Move this...
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We're trying to set a lane speed record.
I'll set that. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Now for the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Begic.
I got that. Resolution number 2022-226, the employment status report, September 2022. I'll move that resolution.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Let's see. Resolution 2022-227, let's see. The Operation Green Lights by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Begic.
So I first heard about this back, the NACO conference last, I think it was February, about this Operation Green Light. So it's a nationwide plan to have, recognize the veterans by turning on the green light to be through October and up to November 11, Veterans Day. So I, very good project, and I wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-228.
No, 229.
Did that one already?
229.
Chamber one, and we have 20...
Got it on your screen.
Where we going here?
On.
That's it?
Got it on your screen.
There. Oh, yes. Bay Veterans Foundation Workshop Amendment Clarification of the $200,000 ARPA Funding Award. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So the $200,000 is going to be for programming, so there's no foundational or building project part of it?
No capital improvements, correct. There were questions on the resolution. I forwarded that to both of the committee chairs and the board chair to ask what the intention of the resolution was. Also received further clarification from outside counsel as to whether or not capital improvements, this money could be utilized for capital improvements, or if we're going to run into the same problem that we ran into with the new Hope Bay issue. And he made a determination, he reached out to Treasury to receive some further information as to whether or not this property would be exempt from those requirements because it was in a qualified census tract. He did receive guidance back from Treasury that it would not be exempted from many of those reporting requirements, and so it's my understanding, based on that earlier resolution, that this was for programming only. I did not want to be the one who was giving that information to Mr. Markstrom, because I didn't know what the intent was, and that's the purpose of the clarification.
So apart from the chamber that they're asking for, is that, what, $50,000 or so? Is that for capital improvement or for the building itself?
That they're asking for from the community foundation?
Yeah.
I have absolutely no idea what they're asking for from the community foundation. We're not involved in that process.
So I guess I assume they have enough to finish the improvement part or the building part of it then?
I do not know.
That's it. Yeah.
So all set?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll try this again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Believe that is all.
Thank you. Okay, now for reports of county officials, departments, county executives.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. Jordan's Way held a fundraiser at the animal shelter last Wednesday. It generated over $5,000, and the list of people, the volunteers who helped is too numerous to mention today, but they will be all acknowledged on our website. And Greg and Diana, who are Diane from the staff, as well as the founder, Chris Rotunda, were able to attend, and it was a great event, and it again generated some badly needed funds for the shelter. The other thing I want to mention is on the topic of broadband and where we're at on that. I met with Jason Allen last week, last Tuesday and Wednesday in Traverse City, and he would be willing to assist us, and would like to come and meet with all the board members and formal, you know, at a board meeting and visit Bay County and see what he can do to help. As you know, he's the former USDA Director under President Trump, but he was also my Senate seatmate for eight years, and he's a very bipartisan guy and very knowledgeable about broadband and how to move forward with USDA funding. However, we do have a wrinkle in the bid process, and I'm not sure if Amber or possibly Shawna maybe would want to explain, but the one, the one entity that submitted a bid for $145,000 to do a needs assessment is not, is not a qualified engineer. So technically, if we were to engage them, even with the USDA, that needs assessment would not be acceptable to the USDA. But Amber or Shawna, would you want to sort of weigh in with where we're at? I know we're meeting Thursday to do an assessment as to how to move forward on this. However, I was very pleased, and also there just happened to be a number of other legislators up there at an event in Traverse City, and so we also talked about some potential funding in another supplemental that will be passed before the end of the year in the lame duck session in Lansing. So we didn't fare well in the first $1 billion. I don't think received any earmarks for Bay County in the first supplemental, which was $1 billion. However, one more supplemental will be approved before the end of the year in the lame duck session. So kind of weighed in on our Health Department request and possibly a compressor request to help save some of the ARPA money for the $1 million at the Civic Arena, and a couple of other issues.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
So, Jim, on the conversation with Jason, was there any talk about fees for him to come down? And I'm sure there's...
Well, I told him that I'd spring for a room and buy dinner, but we didn't talk about, you know, how much, how much, to what extent he'd be involved, and he does have a couple of other clients that he's representing. But he is a, he is a very, he's an expert on broadband issues, and especially getting, you know, the organization to take it forward and right away issues and a lot of the stumbling blocks that every county and every community has with regard to expanding broadband.
I know his background well, but, you know, people don't work for free, and I was just wondering whether or not there was conversation on...
It was my hope, yeah. He didn't, he didn't, he said we'd talk this week, and we didn't get to that point, although he probably would expect some kind of remuneration. But he's always been fond of Bay County. He's been a visitor here many times, and when he comes, I know you were closely with him too as well when he was in the Senate, so we'll have a mutual dinner with him if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
We were hopeful that out of that $150,000 that Commissioner Coonan advocated, the board adopted, that there would be some flexibility with that money, out of the ARPA money. However, if the one, the one estimate we got that was still active is actually $145,000, so that's, that's pretty high compared to what Midland paid. I think they paid around $30,000. But again, I don't believe, I could check with the county administrator controller over there. I don't think they've begun any, any actual broadband work or construction at this point, and they've, they've had their needs assessment for a while.
Is Jason a qualified engineer? Because we mentioned that $145,000 that we allocated, it wouldn't fly because whoever provided us that information was not, didn't meet the qualifications to...
No, Jason wouldn't. It would be an entity that submitted a bid. Jason wouldn't do the needs assessment. He would help us navigate to get the federal money that ostensibly would be the purpose for doing our own independent needs assessment. Does that make sense? When we do our needs assessment, it's only acceptable to USDA.
So the request for proposal that we went out, $145,000, would not qualify?
So if I may, after the last board meeting, we've been actively working to confirm pricing with the vendors and make sure that it would be accomplishing the goals. We've been in communication with both of those vendors, and we'll have a recommendation for you soon. But we want to make sure that what the request for proposal was would meet the goals of the USDA program that Commissioner Fox had mentioned. So we'll have more information about that soon.
The USDA is just a pot of money. It's not, it's not the billions of dollars that we're going to have for infrastructure.
That's the state.
So would the RFP that we sent out, would that qualify or provide us any help when the big pot of money comes into...
Those are the conversations that we're having now and the conversations that are happening in that space with the different vendors. So we'll get a formal recommendation to you as soon as we get full clarification on that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The other source, Michigan Association of Counties Dean Bosworth, the lead lobbyist, she's been following a lot of the money and what's going on with broadband. So, you know, if we have anything more detailed about legislation or funds, she'd be a contact person to let us know what's going on with funding, at least state level. And then NACO, NACO at the federal level too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Miss?
I think we probably need to vote on that grant money from the state for the MVAA, because we voted at our Veterans Affairs to accept it, but I think we need to accept it, because we have to send it back to the state.
Amber, do we have to? We have to have something written down, put it on the agenda before we...
Yeah.
So we could do it at first meeting in November?
Yes.
Yeah.
Money won't be available till January.
Thirty days out, you got 60 days to sign it, so we got about another month to sign it, so.
Yeah, we'll get her.
Yep.
Mr. Chris, Commissioner Krieger?
If I could, I see Joel's here, and I know last week he kind of gave us an overview of where we're at with our possible facility. Maybe something's changed. I'm not sure. So give me the opportunity to enlighten us.
Well, in the last week, we've gone full, full into the appraisal process. We've really met with the appraiser twice. He's gone over a variety of the information that he needs in, at the location, and I expect that we'll have a report with him by the end of the, probably by the end of the month, if not by the beginning of next week. Also have met with architects about the build-out analysis. They've been reviewing a lot of the same information, and it's my desire and my plan to be here back in November to present to you the findings of that, and, you know, if it's, if it looks like it's feasible to ask for the formal allocation to fully allocate those funds for that. It looks like it's a really good opportunity for us. I don't really want to make, you know, mention explicitly where we're looking at right now. And then we've got backup plans in case too, that this just isn't a feasible location at this point in time. But we've also have continued our discussions in the community and really have lined up a number of local organizations, providers, and agencies that have showed really good tentative interest, but they're waiting for that full allocation to come through.
So what I'm trying to do is, seeing that you're here at our meetings, and there's so much information, I'd like it to be spread out like what we're doing, getting bits and pieces, so that when the day does come, we're not overwhelmed and...
You don't want me to monopolize your time for... You don't want me to monopolize your time for an afternoon?
No, I like getting this information as we continue.
Yes, absolutely.
So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Is there any miscellaneous?
No. So Veterans Affairs, you know, we, we received that Operation Green Light report. We had a report from Leonard Norman about the cemetery. He's finishing up his study on the cemeteries, and we plan to try to keep it ongoing when a veteran passes away, that we get that information, put it in an Excel file, so it's an ongoing report, keep it up to date, and then have it, and we're probably going to try to post something maybe on the website about what he's identified, and there may be families out there that have veterans that maybe are not listed, that have not been identified, that they might come, come forward and speak to it.
Yes, and I attended the meeting in Craig's place, as I will. And, yeah, it's important that it be updated from time to time, so we don't fall behind. There are probably still some veterans out there that never spoke about their military service, and, you know, some, I remember when I was serving in Congress, we'd have, it wasn't until a veteran passed away that the family desired to have their medals. The actual veteran didn't, and they were heroic, you know, on battlefield, but chose to forget that chapter of their life. So that's something that we'll look forward going, I mean, look to going forward to make sure that that list, which is, I think, very accurate at this point, but filling in any of those veterans, men and women, that might have slipped through the cracks somehow, due to either the, the, you know, the funeral home, or the family not notifying the county that they were a veteran, actually.
Right?
Yep.
Thank you. Any announcements?
I have one.
Oh, we got announcements. All in place.
All right, I have one. On Saturday, November 12, the Northern Bay Fund is having a trivia night at the Pin County Community Center. Twenty bucks a person, teens of six. It's a really good time. Grab some friends, play trivia.
Or buy some.
Or buy some friends.
That's right.
You're going to put an ad in the journal, I know the editor.
Pay twice as much, right?
Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, let's see, this Saturday at 4:00 PM, Skorupski's out on Pine is doing their annual trunk or treat for the community. It's free of charge, and afterwards, you could, actually, this is, this is pretty fun. You can go to Garber's last home game. It's an odd Saturday, start at like 7:00 o'clock, and you might be able to catch the, the band's last performance at halftime, so.
This is the final regular season week?
It's their final home game.